Good afternoon. I think it's been part of my own tradition here to, after the opening ceremony, to come before the press. I hope that we have the opportunity to interact a lot this year. I plan to continue my weekly, or at least semi-weekly, availabilities in my office. I laid out a few thoughts today from the podium, which I think, which obviously reflect my perspective on this coming session. Trying not to be too wistful or nostalgic, because I still have, you know, still two years, but, you know, everything now is the last time around for me, at least in the legislature. And as I said a few moments ago, I really believe that this is the end of one very difficult era in California and the beginning of a new and better era. That doesn't mean that the challenges and the problems and the controversies all of a sudden go away, far from it. But it does mean that we have an opportunity, I think, to govern with a different focus, a focus less on crisis, a focus more on producing and building and really trying to bring back this economy in a roaring fashion. And we'll have plenty of time to lay out specifics. I know that I intend to spend intensive amounts of time with my colleagues, specifically my caucus, in the early weeks and months of the session, as we work together to map out what we would like to see accomplished over the two-year session. And I conclude by saying that no matter how you or others judge the last number of years, I know that, as I said earlier, that I am privileged to lead a great institution, an imperfect institution, but still a great institution that has, in fact, stepped up in very significant ways over the last, over the last number of years. And we stand here today with the voters having said yes to Prop 30, having given the majority party this historic supermajority, and we intend to use it purposely, with purpose, with humility, and with great strength. And so I'm happy to answer your questions.
The one, seemingly the one concrete thing you talked about saying was taking, you said surpluses, the one-third, one-third, one-third.
Yeah.
How does that square with the governor's intention to pay off what he calls the wall of debt? We're out of rapid.
Yeah.
I mean, that's already declared intention. Is it conflict? Is it what?
I don't think so. I mean, look, and I, you know, in an opening speech of the plenary session, you lay out some broad outlines. And, you know, I said approximate, a third, a third, a third. But we'll sit with the governor, obviously, and with the assembly. And I just think it is important that we start thinking about this now and begin articulating a framework so that not every decision is, oh, my God, why are they doing this instead of that? Why are they spending here? Why are they not spending? And instead, putting the money away when there are so many people who need dental care, use the example that I spoke about earlier. And I just wanted to thought a little bit about it. And everyone's asking, you know, the question, especially when it comes to budget and spending. And I think a fair approach, an approach that recognizes some of the peril of what happened the last time we had surpluses, and we don't have surplus yet, by the way, so this is, this is looking forward, is what I described. We need to put money away for the inevitable rainy day. We need to pay down that debt. But there's also a lot of need out there, and we can't ignore that either. So hopefully, my comment or my frame is a spur for some discussion and that we come together on a, on a frame for the people of California so that they understand how we all intend to go forward.
Speaking of that, the, I was getting, I guess, I would refer to the left wing of your own party, Courage Campaign, the California People, all those folks, they're saying, strike now, the iron talks, you got to do service, go, 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 go. Have you had personal conversations with the representatives of those groups or similar groups? You raised the expectation of the passage of Prop 30.
Yeah.
And two supermajorities. So what are you telling them? Are you telling them to cool it or what?
We, you know, we haven't yet had intensive conversations. Look, it, you know, the one thing that I expect in this messy democracy, among my members, among the stakeholders, among everybody, is that there's going to be a lot of noise and there's going to be a lot of elbows and there's going to be a lot of pushing and pulling. We're used to it. But we've dealt with all of that in these horrible circumstances and horrible times. Now we'll deal with it with some better times and opportunities. And what I will say to them is that, you know, keep pushing. It's fine. You know, a little push from this side, a little push from that side, and it's all an important part of the process. But I just don't think we should, as I said, come hurdling out of the gates, talking about a bunch of new taxes. Now, you know, down the line, as we lay this foundation, as we look at the budgets, we look at the revenue, you know, we can, we can always, always reassess, but that's where we start.
Do you consider that impacts people or does that clarify something that impacts you?
I do not. I mean, that is, that is a, you know, that is a definition made up by, made up by frankly, you know, the, the people who make others sign pledges in, you know, in the other party. I don't. I mean, I think, just as we have an obligation on the direct expenditure side to be careful and responsible about how we spend the taxpayers' dollars, the same is true for money that is spent on tax expenditures. New York Times had a big front-page piece yesterday about how nationally and in many states that there is very little accountability around tax expenditures. I'm not against tax expenditures on principle. I may propose one or two, actually, that, and I think you'd be interested in this because you've written about this a number of times. I'm interested in a tax incentive that gives businesses the incentive to partner with California high schools and create pathways and academies from high school to graduation to college to the work world. And I'm interested in giving businesses a higher rate of return, by the way, than what they'd get in the private market if they can successfully partner with our public schools in that kind, you know, in that kind of fashion. So I'm not against it, but just like on the spending side, show us what you're producing. And so, no, I don't consider, I don't consider modifying a tax expenditure to be a tax increase. That is, that is man-made and just not, I don't agree.
What did you describe or proposal for the use of the surpluses, the one-third, one-third, one-third?
Again, I want to, can you, I want to make sure that it's not a specific proposal. It's a, it's a, it's an attempt to sort of lay out the beginning of a frame here. And the idea is this: we have made awful cuts. There are people hurting out there. Our schools are hurting, the courts are hurting, our institutions of higher education are hurting, the poor and the needy are hurting. I think we have an obligation on that front, but we can't just go and spend more money. We can't. Number one, we don't have it yet, there aren't the surpluses, but I'm looking at the projected surpluses, and when we get them, we can't just pour all the money into making up for what's been lost right away. We have to learn from the past. And part of the past says, you've got to put money away, some money away for the inevitable downturn in the economy, i.e., the collapse of the dot-com in the early 2000s. Number two, we do have debt because we have, in good faith, decided not to cut even deeper than we cut and borrowed and did some other things to make sure that we protected more people in investment than we otherwise would have, you know, had to make even worse decisions. And then, third, yes, we have an obligation to restore as much of what's been lost as possible and, when we spend, to spend in the most effective, efficient ways possible. So a third, a third, a third is, is a, is a frame and an idea about how we might approach that so that not everyone is speculating about, you know, well, what, what does it mean when you have a surplus? What are the Democrats going to do? I, you know, Speaker may have a very different point of view, the governor may have a very different point of view. I'm just one humble, former lawyer, just putting out a humble, simple idea. What's that?
Yes, thank you.
Exactly. I did cite Lincoln. So, yeah.
Did you get a sense from your oxen today that there is some agitation to try to move more quickly?
There's no agitation. I mean, maybe there's agitation. I mean, I, I know I feel agitation every day, but I, I.
Does it give you a sense of irritation?
No. No. I mean, you know, I got to tell you, I sometimes feel, there's parallel universes here. There's maybe what is perceived and maybe what we need to do a better job explaining. And then there's what I see every day. And what I see every day, and I've seen it for four years, by and large, are people, colleagues, who are, came to public office to try to create and to build and who have stepped up and made decisions that they could not otherwise imagine themselves making and did it mostly without complaining. And so now, yeah, we want to look for good, positive opportunities to turn that around. But I think everybody, I know that everybody is, wants to be smart about it, and that's what we intend to do. So, no, I don't, I don't sense agitation.
Let us let a analyst, as, you know, you talk about conservative assumptions, but on the other hand, they've also conservatively or perhaps riskily not assumed things. They don't assume, you know, paying any pension liabilities, big ones down the road. They assume, you know, there's no fiscal cliff, so on, so forth.
Right.
They even assume no pay raises for state workers.
Right.
So do you believe there truly is quite a big surplus down the road or not?
I'm going to be anxious, look forward to seeing the Department of Finance's report at the beginning of January, when the governor lays out his budget, because I think that's always a very important contrast. But I think it's clear from the legislative analyst's report that we are, we are beginning a new era and we can expect better economic and budget news over the next several years. Now, how much, to what magnitude, you know, that remains, that remains to be seen. But we have a responsibility, I think, beginning this year, to address the pent-up demand. And that's what it is. And it's very real and it's very reasonable for advocates and for colleagues and for others to say, you, you know, we ought to restore adult dental care. We can't raise tuition at the higher ed institutions and we ought to put more money into higher education. We ought to fund domestic violence courts and other areas of the courts where things have been lost. That's all natural and it's all, it's all to be expected. We're going to have to, we're going to have to balance it, that's all. We're going to have to balance it. And balance it in a way that actually provides some hope for, for as much of that as possible, but also recognizes that the economy may never grow as fast as we want it to, the numbers may not be as good as we want them to be, and that we have some other obligations, including setting aside money for a rainy day and paying down debt. So we'll do the best we can, imperfectly, I'm sure, but we'll do it well. What?
What does it say about the last election, perhaps this would be as much a statement about term limits as they existed before the last election? Do you have the biggest pressure in the last election right now?
Yeah. Well, I think the voters made a very wise decision to modify the term limit law. It won't affect me, but it will affect the future of the legislature, I think, in very positive ways. The fact that new members can serve up to 12 years in one house is a good thing. You know, those of us who take this trade seriously, we get better at it the longer we do it. I'm better than I was four years ago in terms of understanding it and, and having been through some of the experiences. And so more time, even if people think it shouldn't be a career, is a good thing for the legislature and for the people of California. But that's going to take a to, it's going to take a while before you see the impact of it. In the meantime, I think we're doing pretty darn okay, and we're going to continue to.
The learning curve.
Learning curve. I can tell you for myself, when I was in the assembly back, back in the old days, back in the, when I got elected in 98, I was okay. I mostly, you know, succeeded based upon hard work and instinct and that kind of thing, but I didn't really learn how to be a legislator until my fifth or sixth year in the assembly. So long it took me before I really understood it, understood the relationship between the two houses, the executive branch, all the nuances that, that make you more effective. And I was lucky because I sat out two years and then I was able to come back and, and pick up where I left off. But now, I think, for members, they're going to have time, you know, to settle in a little bit. And, you know, I always tell new members when they ask my advice, you want to succeed in a term-limited legislature, there are a couple of keys. And one key is to pick a couple of subject matters that few others or no one else is really working on, that aren't at the top of the political pop charts, the bill that everybody wants to author, but is really important. And go make that your, your passion and your, and your specialty. And no matter what else you do, you'll have a great experience. And even though the term limits now are longer for new members, I think that still, that advice still holds. Pick your subject matter and go, go drive the change you want to see. Rich?
With all this turnover, what impact do you think this is going to have on possibility to revamp the water bond?
Well, I think the two-thirds supermajorities, that's one area where we have the opportunity to revamp the water bond, and we will take advantage of it. Now, again, the Republicans were a big part of the original agreement and we want them to be full participants, but no one's going to have, you know, absolute veto power here. And we know with the water bond, we have to shrink it. It's got to get well below $10 billion. And as a result, we're going to have to, we're going to have to make priorities. People forget that the water bond is really sort of the last piece here because we passed historic water policy in 2009 as well that provides a frame for, for addressing this question of alternative conveyance and the future of the delta, state conservation, water reuse policy. The bond and the financing to, to ensure that we can pay for a number of these changes is still key. We have to pass a water bond. I hope 2014 is the year, needs to get below $10 billion. We have to prioritize, and we hope we do it with the Republicans, but we have the, the supermajorities now to be able to, to change it one way or the other.
Following up on that, there aren't the differences on that as much geographical as partisan?
Yes.
Does it really make it easier if you get two-thirds Democrats or not?
It, water is interesting. It does tend to be a little less partisan, a little bit more geographic. But I'm confident that, I am confident that either with Republicans and/or on our own, we will be able to come to a consensus on modifying that water bond so that it's shipshape and ready to be passed by the voters in 2014. Kevin?
You mentioned addressing pent-up demand a few minutes ago.
I'm sorry?
You mentioned addressing.
Pent-up demand, yes.
Do you think you'll address that in the first year here in 2013, 14, by the way?
Well, we'll look to see what the Department of Finance's analysis is, but if we, if the budget is in balance, if the budget is balanced, but we don't have surpluses or we have a lingering, smaller deficit, then no, we're not going to be able to deal with pent-up demand in year one. But this is a time, especially with this new power and authority, where we need to be thinking and planning beyond a one-year time horizon. And that's why I raised what I did this afternoon in my speech.
You briefly alluded to some constitutional changes.
Yes.
Can you expand on that as far as what you know?
Well, look, we know a couple of things. The legislature, we know that some outside groups have tried in, in good faith, but they've had as much trouble on the outside coming to consensus as, you know, we had with our less-than-two-thirds supermajority in the legislature. We have the opportunity, you know, under the law, the legislature can put on the ballot with two-thirds votes in each house, a constitutional revision, which isn't subject to the single-subject rule. And so I say we go relatively slowly, deliberatively, but that we use this two-year session and decisions wouldn't have to be made until 2014, if you're talking about the 2014 ballot. But we look at what needs fixing. I've talked about the initiative process. I think that's an obvious place to start. I think we ought to give, even with its two-thirds now, I know, we ought to give the legislature the ability by majority vote to put statutory initiative on the ballot with the governor's signature. Governor Brown shouldn't, excuse me, should not have had to go through what, you know, he went through, what we went through in 2011 around simply asking the people to fulfill a campaign pledge that he made. I think we ought to look at a form of the indirect initiative where there is a real window, a real window, even after signatures are submitted, for an initiative proponent to sit down with the legislature and the governor and to try to work out a compromise. And if we do, with the consent of all parties, that compromise substitutes for the submitted initiative. And I think there ought to be some kind of sunset on these initiatives. I think there's going to be bills, obviously, on more extensive public disclosure of, of who's funding these initiatives. I'll, you know, look forward to supporting those. And then I have nothing against people with wealth deciding they want to engage in the process, but maybe there ought to be a minimum threshold before you can qualify an initiative that you ought to at least have, I don't know, 1,000 donors of $100 apiece, something like that, as just indication that you have some broader base support beyond just one person with, with a lot of resources. So, and I'm sure there are other ideas as well, but initiative reform is certainly something that we're, we're interested in.
Proposition 13.
Could you remind me what Prop 13 is again? I'm sorry. Which, oh, the, the old water bond. Oh, yeah.
Around the government last time.
Look, it, we have to build a foundation of success, a foundation of tangible achievement before we start, we're sorry, we really start there. But I will tell you, we shouldn't be scared of anything. Shouldn't be scared of anything as long as we, as long as we have the support of the people and as long as we're smart and, and we take into account all points of view. I mean, the idea of giving local governments and school districts the ability to go to their voters with less than a two-thirds supermajority to, to affect their own destiny, I think is a very sound idea, and I think the public supports it. So if that's Prop 13, okay. I know that there are other, a lot of issues with Prop 13. I've often talked about, well, it's sort of related, but I've never understood why a special tax where you do the quote "right" thing and tell your voters exactly how you intend to spend their money requires a two-thirds vote, but if you are vague and don't tell them how you're going to spend your money and it's just going to be for the general fund and trust us, that's a majority vote. I sort of think those things should be reversed. I've long.
Are you saying you want two-thirds on the other one now?
I'm saying if I, I'm saying if I had to make the trade, I'd make that trade. Yeah. And a player to be named later, by the way. Okay?
Local taxes. In the past, you talked about that in terms of partial taxes. Are you thinking about other taxes, sales taxes or anything?
No. No, not at, not at this point. The part, I think you, good, where's the public? Public sentiment, talked about that. I think the public would get behind 55% threshold for partial taxes.
Would you say you'd go after some of these two-thirds votes in these first three months?
No. See, that's the other part of it. I mean, may, well, let me be, let me be definitive, okay? Maybe. I, I don't think, I mean, I think bills will move through the process, but we have 2013 and 2014 to think about the Constitution. It doesn't have to be done, none of it has to be done in 2013, can if it's, the time is right. But I think this, this is a year of, of serial achievement. That's the goal.
Senator, you guys are pretty good at keeping lawmakers from piling on, piling on too much for health care requirements, essential health benefits.
Yeah.
Given the change in the membership and your supermajority, are you optimistic you will be able to continue reining folks in?
Well, I think it's an area where, you know, there's a special session on health care and it's an area we're going to take a look at, but I know that mental health parity is part of essential benefits. The autism behavioral therapy that I worked hard on in 2011 is part of essential benefits. We got vision care, and it's a good thing for my district and VSP into the, into the essential health benefits. And, you know, we will take a look at all of that. You know, we'll take a look at it. I have an open, open mind.
Are you vetting, is the caucus in any way vetting what constitutional amendments are getting proposed? I know that Senator Lou, for instance, initially, out of the box, talked about the BLF as an idea, but then he kind of retracted.
Yeah.
But then we've seen, you know, a couple of them last week from Senators Wolf and Senator Leno that haven't been retracted.
No, they haven't been because, you know, those aren't.
You think that's an area that ought to be enforced. So are there certain areas that you think should and should not be touched?
Well, first of all, I mean, not to put too fine a point on it, but those aren't state, we're not talking about raising taxes or state-raising taxes. You're talking about giving local governments and school districts the ability to take these questions of expenditure and revenue to their voters. It's, it's really consistent with Big D democracy here. So it's, to me, to me, it is very different. Are we going to vet? You're darn right we are. Called the committee process, appropriations committee, and all kinds of other things. But look, I, everyone is going to jump on, I expect members are going to introduce bills that are going to, you know, that are going to raise that same, you know, that same issue. Okay. It's 120 members. You know, this process is a funnel. People, they have their ideas. Great. They all represent their districts, their points of view. The funnel, though, ensures that what we send to the governor's desk has been vetted in many different ways, including being vetted by me as the leader at least of, of one house. And, and we will, I'm not drawing, I'm not drawing any, what's that?
Fighting line when it comes to taxes that perhaps giving power to locals, okay, but the state and the Capitol or, you know, through the legislative process, raising taxes here in the building, not okay? Or is it?
I, I think where I start on this question of constitutional reform, at least part of constitutional reform, there's so many, so many things to look at, is I believe the public supports giving school districts the ability to, the ability to control their own, their own destinies. And that the 55%, you know, exists for school bonds, local school bonds, and that it ought to exist for any pri- to exist for any priorities that a school district decides it wants to take to its voters. I think the public supports it.
Can you kick up in the first three months?
Not necessarily.
I wonder, I mean, you have a very small window with this.
No, we don't. See, that's, here's another, '29 is different from '28, by the way. And it's not just a matter of simple math, but it's really important because, number one, the '29 recognizes that in 2014, the Leland-Yi seat goes away. It just does by virtue of the calendar and redistricting. So that takes us down one automatically. And then we have, we anticipate a very competitive cycle in 2014 where the now-Luke Correa seat in Orange County, it's gotten a little tougher for us. Now, so did Senate District 27 with Fran Pala. We won, and we're going to compete and compete to win. But the '29, there's no assurances, but is a greater insurance that we're going to be able to keep this, keep the 2/3s in the Senate for significantly longer than just a two-year period of time. That's one thing. Number two, with the '29, even though we lose two members to Congress, there isn't a period of time that we anticipate throughout the session, at least on the Senate side, where we're not going to have 2/3s. Because '29 will take us down to '27. Those seats will be filled by the, should be by the latest in May, which will get us back to '29. Bob Hertzberg, what's that?
And Karen Price leaves.
And Karen Price leaves, so that then takes us to '28. And then that is filled before the end of the session. So we're going to be at, we're going to be at the 2/3 super majority for the duration.
Yeah, but so the assembly will be down below, so you won't have that pool.
Well, the Assembly's now at 55, and they've got probably Ben Wesso coming over. And then we don't know who, you know, the successor might be for the Negretti-McLeod seat. So, I mean, it's just, okay. We're not, I'll tell you this, at least for me, I'm not going to use, number one, we have 2013 and '14 to talk about the Constitution, right? That's the advantage of the legislature acting. We don't have to, we don't have to do this in 2013. And so, for me only, I'm not going to let the little intricacies of this, of the 2013 calendar where, you know, there's going to be vacancies for short periods of time until they're filled, affect our thinking and decision-making about how we intelligently approach looking at the Constitution. Better to do it right than to do it too hurried because somebody's vacating one house to serve in another house or in a different body. Just, that's not, that's not going to drive the timing, at least for the Senate. Mr. Hertzberg...
Mr. Hertzberg, in the San Fernando Valley People's Journal, who's going to have to run for Governor next time?
I support Jerry Brown. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Are you going to keep the pay freezes for staff in place now that Prop. 30 has passed?
Yes.
One more question, since you're speculating. A lot of the things the Governor kind of halfway tried to do this year and says he wants to do next year is the way to school.
Yeah.
First of all, do you favor that approach, at least in general? Secondly, how do these partial taxes you're talking about play into that? Because you conceive of you doing this and then the school districts going back and trying to get partial taxes, and they might be more successful in these wealthier districts that might lose money under the way to school funding. I mean, this whole thing seems to be, it could be very complicated.
It is complicated. Well, a couple of points. One, I am much more open to this idea as a result of the Governor signing my SB 1458 last year, which to me was a predicate for even discussing it. And that bill, which more of you ought to really study and get to know, because I think it, I think it could be a game changer here in California, excuse the cliche, over time. The bill limits standardized tests to no more than 60% of a high school's academic performance index. The remaining 40% have to be indices related to college and career readiness, like graduation rates. And this plays right into the thing that, Mr. Walters, you keep writing about, about the need to diversify high school education. The curriculum is far too narrow, and it's based on, success is based on how well you do on an annual standardized test. The result of that is that there is no incentive to merge career education with academic rigor. Why in a state of this, I'm on my soapbox now, why in a state of this, with our advances and our abilities, have we not developed 10 different ways to teach algebra, geometry, biology, history, the life sciences in a way that are relevant to career pathways? That's what kids are looking for. That's the way we reduce that dropout rate, is to engage young people and at the same time, prepare them for the new economy. So, given that the Governor signed this bill, and now the system is going to have to account for things other than test scores, I'm open to a different funding formula, because now the need for so-called categorical funding to make sure that career education or some of the other specific categories are taken care of, at least has been lessened in my mind. But you raised the good point. How you do it is complicated, especially when you have differentials in property tax bases, especially if we were to go to 55%. We always have to follow the state constitutions mandate and the California Supreme Court's mandate that we equalize school funding so that poorer districts are not at a disadvantage. So this is one of those, in my view, that you don't shy from, but you start out relatively slowly, and you try to work out the kinks over time.